Hello.
Hi, Fad.
Hiya.
I need to brush my hair.
Just leave it casual.
Okay then.
If you need to do the other side, it's slightly... That's it, that's much better. Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Pick it up, mate.
No, it's not, it's fine. That's just perfect.
We've got enough to worry about anymore.
Okay, well, we should be restarting, so, um... Yeah, Fad, we can hear you. So this new club, Andy, Keith and me can all hear each other.
That's a good idea.
Oh, hi. Um, we can't seem to get anybody to hear us. Can you hear me on the phone? Um, can you, can you see that we've been typing up? Um, well, everyone seems, everyone seems to be on mute, but that shouldn't stop us being able to be heard, it's just...
Yeah, quite right.
Oh, okay, all right, lovely.
I think you, you need to start the meeting, don't you?
Yeah.
Quite right, Terry, we're building up seven.
Yes, quite, exactly. Can't get the stuff. Okay, right, so are we all okay to start now then? You're all muted, Tony, is that so? Is that, okay, so...
I don't know where Pete's gone, because Pete was in the meeting, but he seems to have...
Yeah, he was, he was in, and he was also, we could hear him. Um, but, um, as you say, his, his things, things sort of dropped off. But I think we should start, don't you, in the, considering time and things, and he can join when he, when he gets back on. He did say he was having some technical issues. Um, okay, so, uh, welcome everyone, um, to the Planning and Environment Committee meeting, um, today, um, trying to take it back over. Um, uh, emergency elation procedure. I don't know if, um, shall I just go through this anyway? In the event of a fire alarm, fire drill or other emergency, signal by the continuous sounding of a bell, please exit from the room via the exit doors indicated and assemble at the meeting point in the car parking area. Obviously, that's for people that are in the building. Um, filming recording of the meeting in line with the openness of local government bodies, Regulation 2014, this meeting may or will be filmed or recorded by the town council or members of the public. So item number one is submissions from the public. Have we got any, um... No, so the public on the, on today? No, okay. Um, item number two, to receive any apologies for absence.
Yes, I've got apologies from, um, councillor Ditcher, who's at another meeting. He's hoping to join us later if his other Zoom meeting or virtual meeting finishes early. But yeah, he sent his apologies. And I did have apologies from Andy, but he's obviously managed to get back in time to get to the meeting.
Okay, all right, perfect. Um, all right then, point number three, declarations by members under the Local Government Act 1972. I think that's a no. Um, item number four, announcements by the chair. I don't have any, um, any points to raise or announcements to make. Uh, item five, to confirm the minutes of the meeting of the 23rd of September 2020 as a record, as a correct record.
I'm happy with the...
I'm happy, Terry.
Okay, lovely, thank you. Can we all have a, um, a vote on, uh, whether we support that?
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are you happy for the Chair of Council to sign hard copy in your absence?
If, if he's happy to, well, I'm not absent, I'm just in a different place.
That's what I mean, not, not only...
I know, I know, I know. But yes, if he's happy to do that, then that would be very welcome.
It's gonna make that, she used to put it again. They used to, a long time ago, they used to like regenerate signatures. I'm going to have to sign hundreds of documents, whatever.
Yeah, go on, if you want.
Okay, is that...
Okay, more details.
Okay, all right, lovely, thank you for that. Um, point six, to consider any matters arising from the minutes of the meeting on the 23rd of September 2020, not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Six point one, pinch point on shared Brookway pedestrian cycleway, South Gloucestershire Council local transport priority list linked to COVID-19 social distancing. Easy for you to say. Um, I wrote, I copied all of the chairs on a note that I sent out, um, to the two British State Councillors for South Gloucestershire, um, to see if we could, um, do something about progressing or escalating this, because it has apparently been on the, on the, um, the list of issues for 10 years. And, um, it's the, um, the resident who's raised the original issue is, um, is becoming, you know, is regularly raising it again and again. So I was trying to see if we could maybe, um, get the two councillors and somebody, some sort of empowered person in South Gloucestershire, um, to all meet and at least come to an agreement about either what happens next, if anything, or, you know, basically, what can we do to bring this to a conclusion? Because the one thing we can't do, in my view, is that we can't keep going on for another 10 years without anything actually happening. So, um, I've not heard anything back from the councillors. Have you heard anything back, um, Sharon?
No. If not, yeah, anything that I know, um, there was anyone who said in from South Gloucestershire, um, about this particular piece.
Was that where they said that they had actually done, they had made some, uh...
Well, those in your...
I responded, I responded to the email to the particular person, because my response was basically to say that, here is the reason why it hasn't been done about this was cost. And I said, what is it, would it cost if somebody had a serious accident at this particular location on the...
Yeah.
And, um, lovely, I've had a response, I don't think I have any...
Yeah, um, I think they, I think also that they, the, what seems to come up all the time is, is the, is the complexity with dealing with the culvert. And, um, and, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not a, you know, building expert or whatever, but, you know, I, I don't know how to answer. So really, I don't know. I don't know how to take this forward, because it's on the minutes of the planning, um, agenda for, you know, every single time. And I just don't know, other than do what I've done and, I don't know how to take it forward really. So I don't know if anybody's got any suggestions of what we could do from here.
Can we not write yet further, as I say? Can you please give us a update?
Yeah, well, in your agenda pack, you've got the, the most recent update that I had from South Gloucester, which, when I got that in, that's the one that you then replied and said about the cost. But I haven't heard anything back from them since then. But then, Terry, you sent the, that email, didn't you, to both the councillors? Um, was it earlier this week? No, the end of last week? So...
Yeah, I think it was early this, earlier this week, but...
Yeah, so it might be worth us then chasing again to say...
I, I could see the problem. When they say, well, there's this small course of apple, culvert, you could easily put... The simple solution is there's a concrete pipe that you get. You dig out deep enough, there's water to run through, and you, you, you effectively serve as the top of it. I, I can't see the problem.
I agree, actually, because, I mean, they have made the point that it, that, that water flows into some...
Oh, well, you...
Some place where it's very important and, um, you know, and, and exactly, it's not like you're trying to say, don't let the water flow. You're just saying, come up with a, you know, a better solution, so that you can do something around the topic. So, so...
Be sensitive pond. Well, well, fine, we're not trying to block the water.
Exactly.
We actually put the chisel in there for the water to go through, and you, you pull the pond from that.
I wonder if the issue is more a case of this, what they mentioned here about the common land. That could, uh, put a problem to mix as well.
But in the, the extra information that they sent out, the bit, the, the bit at the bottom of that says that actually, the local authorities are now supposed to promote schemes. So that's, that would be a positive to get them to do something, wouldn't it? So...
Are they saying it's outside of our parish? They're calling it a parish council, I mean, we're a town council. And what, so my question is, is it outside of our parish?
Yeah, I don't quite know which bit, because Terry asked me that question. No, um, the resident asked me that question, it's, uh, when they were saying that it's, it's managed by the parish council and it's a bit of common land. But actually, in that vicinity, we, as a town council, don't manage any land there. If they're talking about Common East, which is on the other side of Brookway, as you, as you look down Brookway. South Gloucester, actually, that is sort of their land, and they sort of do remedial works on it. But if they're talking about the bit on that side, where really wide verges where all the trees are, I, I don't know whether that's South Gloucester. Well, that's, that's what Terry's asked them to try to do, yeah.
First, we need to get a site needs, and then we can actually then tell if that was what...
Because I think, yeah, you stand there and look at, and say, is that yours? Whose is that? What's that? Yeah.
Who's responsible for that?
Well, that's, yeah, that's exactly the point, really. And, and, uh, as I say, I've made that request, um, and I've not heard any reply. So I don't know, I don't know how to, other than keep chasing, which has been obviously clearly going on for 10 years. I mean, I don't know how you actually escalate something.
I think that was by Nick, what, there. They've actually said common land. I wonder if there was some special reg, regulation regarding use of common land or change of use of common land.
Well, yeah, that could be the case, but we, as a, as a, you know, a collection of people, don't know that. We're not expert in those areas. And so therefore, we need some, um, input from South Gloucestershire. But I think Keith was trying to speak, were you, Keith?
Yeah, thanks, Terry, I'm glad. I don't, I don't know for how long, but, uh, yeah, right. Um, I came in on the back of this. I, I think you're discussing the trees or something and a drain, was it? I heard Tony talking about.
Yeah, it's a big point that's been sort of on the agenda for quite a long, yeah, a long time.
And it's the, well, I'm just wondering, I, I heard Michael say common land. I mean, are, I wonder if they're talking about the common?
Well, it says in the notes, it says Brookway stroke the common.
Right.
I was just thinking that it'd be, go on.
The commons split in two, as you know, by Brookway. Now, one side, is it the part which meets the A38?
No. No, it's the bit that borders on the, the houses in Stoke Lodge and the Common and Brookway itself. So it's that grass verge there by where, by the doctor's surgery just down from the entrance there.
Right, because some of that there, I mean, I, I, there's, there's a community centre, isn't there? Over the back of there. Now, some of it's Patchway and some of it is the common. And, you know, well, now that, you know, it got, Stoke Lodge got took away from Patchway, I mean, it's one of those grey area bits, isn't it?
Well, I think the problem we've got is, I don't even think we can drop it now. I think we really must press as hard as possible to get someone in South Gloucestershire to, or South Gloucestershire Council, um, you know, who's, um, suitably qualified in order to at least, you know, give us an idea about what can or even maybe cannot happen. Because the resident that's complaining is becoming, you know, he's complaining more regularly. And, and really, after all of this time, I think we just need to get to a position. And, and I think Andy, sorry, Tony, just two seconds, Andy's trying to, uh, or was trying to get in. So do you want to just quickly say what you want?
Yeah, just a second. The, the main part of, it's concerning, probably part of Common West, which is Stoke Lodge and the Common, as Keith has been saying. There are a set of bollards across the road there, and it then becomes part of Brookway, and that's where the pinch point itself is. So it's kind of on, on the main road itself and not in Common West or in Common East. It's, it's on the adopted highway path.
Yeah, and, and, Tony, did you want to say something?
Yeah, um, I really feel we have some sort of clarity. From South Gloucestershire, we have a piece of land which needs to be developed so that we can make the cycle path just a little bit wider, you know?
Yeah, and, and it, and that's...
I'm mind the premises.
Exactly.
Who owns what there and is it this there or not there?
Surely you can find that out from the language. Yeah.
I, I think, personally, I think we now are at a stage where we absolutely must get somebody from South Gloucestershire to pick this up, because it is a South Gloucestershire issue, isn't it?
Right.
I, I, I would say Property Services.
Yeah, I take my, uh, respect, you could get things in Land Registry, but it's not our position to do that.
Exactly, precisely, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would say Property Services, Terry. It's, uh, it's a piece of land. If it's adopted, then it's Property Services that have got to do any checks. I mean, they can do their own land registry stuff as well. I mean, it doesn't cost a lot to do a land registry, uh, check anyway. It'll cost about five pounds, but that's not the point. It's, it's land that is adopted. So if it's adopted, then it's South Gloucester, Property Services, they are the people.
Okay, and thank you, Keith. Is it Sharon, can I just ask, have you got the contact details for the Property Services area in South Gloucestershire?
I'm, I'm sure that I can make myself annoying enough that they, someone finally get back to me.
Bye, Sharon.
So, yeah, thank you, okay. So I think, I think that if it, so I, I think if everybody agrees, that's the, uh, the next, um, step. Because it really does, you know, the ownership needs to, of this, resolving this issue needs to be moved to South Gloucestershire Council.
I want, I want to contact, um, the South Gloucester office clerk who responded to my email by phone. I won't do it as an email. I want to do it till Monday, because I'm off for a couple of days. But yes, we, I'll definitely see what I can find and get on that.
Okay, all right, brilliant, thank you. Okay, lovely, thank you very much for everybody's input on that. Uh, the six point two is South Gloucestershire Council update on tree planting on council land, 2019 to 2022, Bradley Stoke.
So you have that in your agenda pack? There is an update, uh, from the biodiversity team. And there are also some better maps. Because if you remember, the maps we had last time were very dire and difficult to read. So the areas that are in the dark green on the two maps that you've got show you the areas that South Gloucester biodiversity have identified as potentially being good to plant some trees in. The list that you have of the types of tree that they want to plant, um, which is 6,000 trees in total, that's across the whole of South Gloucestershire. Um, I think that they're, well, you can see what it says in there, um, about the spot, the places that they've identified across the whole of the area. So it looks like that although Bradley Stoke is sort of programmed in for this winter, hopefully, they'll be looking at Bradley Stoke next winter as well.
The thing is, what, what I find a little bit disturbing, that movie, Six Day Tree, is, uh, um, as mentioned, I currently only have one good spot in our big red stick, which is Primrose Bridge, and we'll probably take 100. So we only like to get 100 trees as a thing.
It is a bit disappointing, but, yeah.
Yeah, or, well... Very disappointing.
I mean, obviously, she was, they are keen to hear from, from councillors for any of the other areas that have potentially been identified for tree planting.
Huge tree, they've taken out it, over tree, crazy. They, they do, they're, 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 I don't know, it's a map.
Yeah, because I think that's, that on the map, that, that grass verge is, is on there, isn't it? Yeah, yeah.
But they're, they're, they appear to be managing it with it, they're just putting a Primrose Bridge.
But, but she...
As they say it on the front page.
Yeah, but she's also interested in hearing, getting feedback from councillors to specific areas. So that's one I can definitely pass on to her, the, the grass verge on, um...
Or, uh, this is a report, it's a work in progress, isn't it? And she said, I'm still looking at that.
Yes, yeah.
So this is one which is unidentified, or I like it with more, or in more...
Yeah, so, I mean, if any other councillors have any sort of good ideas for ones that she's identified, so...
But where's the end of the maps, if they've, you know?
This Primrose Bridge, that's a very large area of green space. Most of these are large area of green spaces, even talking about both, you know, the culvert. Ironically, this actually gives us the land with our parish, this map. Um, in that area.
So what, so what are we being asked to comment on? Whether we agree, whether we have ideas about the number or different types of trees that are going to be planted in where, is it?
Not really, this is, this is, obviously, they, they have identified potentially the areas where trees could go. Um, so it's, if you are happy with, with those trees and then also, you know, to sort of raise other areas. I mean, perhaps, you know, down on, I don't know, about, um, sort of Sherborne, Brayton, Bailey's Court Road, there's, there's, um, a few grass verges down there.
Well, this is a big highlight, isn't it, on the map?
Yeah. So, I mean, I could, I could go back to her, I, I noticed, Terry, that Keith's got his hand up. But I could go back to her and say, we want trees planted in all the areas you've identified, especially oak tree and, and Brookway. Because as Ben says, these are the main green areas where you would hope that they would look at planting some trees.
Um, I can't see, uh, I can't see Keith being handing up actually, Sharon, so, um, he has...
Yeah, it is.
Keith, yeah, on the screen.
Yeah, it's up.
Oh, sorry, okay. So I can't, sorry, Keith, I can't see that.
All right, don't worry. Um, it's all very piecemeal, isn't it? They've got so many trees to go around, they've got to try and spread it out over all the councils. And, you know, I think they're just trying to look for odd sites here. But let's be honest, I mean, there's going to be a bigger problem next year when they start taking down the ashes, the ash dieback problem. They're going to need a lot of trees to replace stuff in South Gloucester long term.
Yeah, they've already started that, me.
I know, yeah. And it, you know, I mean, they started, they've just taken trees down round the back of me here. I see there's a little green blob on the map here, on, uh, map two, I think it is. And it seems to imply the sort of end house, as you've got the cycle track. Don't quite know why. They've taken out a few widows, but that'll come back.
Okay, I think we need to, um, decide on exactly what we need to go back to the, to Sally with, um, Sharon, because, um, we've got... Well, it's really, um, you know, we're halfway through, well, we're half, you know, half seven nearly already, so...
Yeah. Shall I go back to her and say we want as many trees as possible, um, in the locations that you've identified, especially on the Brookway oak tree to replace the huge ash tree that has recently been removed? Because it does look very oaky in that area.
As I know, we can't do the way, though, when you put the, on the map, we've got a big section of yellow, which is a very high kilt apple.
Yeah, that's, I think, is that meadow grass, the high kilt?
Yeah, so that is, that's meadow grass down there. But this green patch in front of it is, um, it might be quite interesting. I mean, again, we will use that green open space, have a green open space now and things like that with it. The, uh, just the adjacent nature, so. So I think in terms of, um, actual tree planting, to plant back into trees would be quite a challenge. And it's very, very close, people phone door, to just to get people phone door to a wood.
I mean, that's what the biodiversity officer wants, is local knowledge. So it's that sort of thing to, to go back and, and say.
That's the only one, once I'm quite concerned about. So, yeah, it's, it's a green open space, we could plant trees in there. But I think planting trees on that, but a green open space in Juniper Way would be a mistake and for those residents there, and generally have that, uh, immunity space being used, but...
Can I make a suggestion?
Um, use it as an open space for sex.
Yeah, and if you have, if marked on it, then people are just going to sit on them or damage them, aren't they? In the initial growing stage. Yeah.
Guys, can I make a suggestion? Um, I'm not, I don't believe that we can make a decision like this based on looking at a map. And I just wondered whether people would feel happy if we all got together and asked if we could be taken around to the various sites and actually see it, physically, see them physically? Which, you know, that, that point you're making, Ben, might be a bit more, you know, you could, in all cases, you might be able to, or easily determine whether it's a good or bad idea by physically being there. I think, did you want to come in?
Yeah, we're going back a few years ago, we did, I can't remember what it was for, but do you remember, Sharon, I reidentified all of the green spaces in Bradley Stoke?
Yeah, most of which actually they did accept it, though. That was the landscaping, um, character assessment or whatever it was, yeah.
No, they didn't accept it, but we did have a piece of work, which is at the office somewhere, which identified, and we did, um, Google Earthing, we did all of the green spaces. So, yes, it's a good idea to go out and wander around and try to do that. But somewhere in the office is all the paperwork from that work that I did, um, which shows the green spaces in...
spaces in some detail.
Oh, okay, so would that be possible, Sharon, for you to look that out?
Yeah, but that would, I think you, you need to, what you need to use is the, is potentially the maps that she's given you, as they're the areas that, yeah, so.
Those places are spaces that I have involved on the maps.
Asking for feedback or anything like that.
Yes, they're asking for input from the town councils, because. No, no, it's just, they're asking for local, local knowledge of the areas that they are, have identified as being good to plant trees, so I don't think they necessarily are looking for more areas, they want to know what council think of the areas that they found.
Personally, I'm quite confident, I know where those areas are, I'm out of about meeting the town to understand the context personally, but this might be different, but, um.
So can I propose that we suggest that we have a site meeting or, you know, round, a sort of a tour around these sites, and then for all those who are willing to do that, to meet up, go around the sites, identify exactly what's going to happen, and then feedback.
Do you want, would it be, would it make sense, if it's possible, for then the biodiversity officer involved in the, the site meeting to go around and have a look?
Absolutely, that's, yeah, that's, that's what I was meaning really, for, for us to be kind of shown around, and, you know, for them to sort of talk us through exactly what's going to happen, what types of trees are going to be there, how, you know, what it, what they will look like in, you know, a year, two years, ten years, and everything else, and then we, we're, we're having much more, um, a much, yeah, better ability to be able to determine whether we think it's a good idea or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so can, can we, is that, um, can we, I don't know whether we vote on this, Sharon?
No, no, that's fine, I'll, I'll just go back to home and say.
I was just wondering, uh, that thing, so, we're living in Bailey's Court, I think the area is there, we've marked, could be ideal, but small trees.
Okay, well, the, the grass verge down there.
Sharon, can I just interject here a second? I think in the interest of time, I think that's a good point, but it's something that we can talk about at the site meeting in our audience, so do you think we can draw this to a close and move on? If everyone's happy?
Love it.
Hi, Tony.
Thank you.
I'll have to go back and look around, then we watch you there, and then hopefully come up with a, with a date where everybody can.
Yeah, exactly.
So you distance them, have a wander around and look at trees.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Open spaces.
Right, exactly, great, thank you. Okay, so moving on then to point seven, to note the act from a previous planning applications and other documents pertaining to planning and environment issues.
You have that in your agenda pack, so there have been six decisions, five of which agreed with South Ossage, and one of which was, um, we didn't actually make a comment on that was during the Covid lockdown, but, yeah.
All did well.
Absolutely, yeah, gold star, thank you. Okay, um, number eight, to prepare responses for the proper authorities regarding planning applications relating to Bradley Stoke, these also refer to the planning items as detailed on the link referred to, and refer to the planning weekly and monthly list.
So I think then everyone updated, uh, version today, because one more planning application came in today, so that, the only one you won't have on your, your hard copies is two oh three week of right? I'm just going to go in a second whilst I turn on the screen. So the first one is. One Orpam Park, Ashwood Road, installation of two flukes and two extractor pipes, and it's a rectus effective one. Oh, it's happening, super close. Okay, eventually. Right, okay, so it is this industrial building just on the edge there.
And residents.
So it's this here, well, there are the other side of there, aren't there, the, um.
Are there any comments from residents on that?
Oh, absolutely nothing on that one.
It's already happened, it's done, so unless, uh, there's anything outrageous, I think we should move it.
Agreed.
What's the pipe?
Right, hang on a second, so, um. Right, so it is literally complex like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we should move it, yeah, okay then, so can we have a vote on it?
So, sorry, do you propose no objection back please?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, and Michael seconded.
Thank you, I take, sorry, can you take a note on that? There's seven on the table, so that's six in favour, I think, that right?
Yeah.
Because, no, honestly, I have to split it between them. Sorry, can you just vote again, those in favour?
I'm voting yes, but I can't get anywhere on the screen at the moment.
I've got six in favour. Again? Mine again?
I would say that they were four. Whether that condition or.
No, um, I think if you look on the. So it's given marks, just limited if the, um, company.
Two marks.
Two marks, so they do, like, half frame, they, they've got the installation of pre fabricated sprays. Sprays. No, okay.
On to the next one, because we've carried that one.
Yep, so we can name it then. Had that one. We've done. Okay, so, that one. The next one is P twenty-one, six, three, nine, seven, PBR, the erection, single story side and rear extension to form additional living accommodation at Streton House, seven saved me. If I have a second. Image. With this house here, on the end. And it has a school image. It's that house. All right, uh, actually, we, um, this is a location. So that's what's there at the moment. So going from that to that.
I think I've, uh, Sharon, the building in the land, so.
We have that, yeah.
Or the report, yeah.
Yeah, there is, there is a comment of.
Superseded.
Yeah, there is, um.
Superseded, not planned, but it's highly dated, that one up and bottom.
Yeah, no, superseded means the revised one, so the outdated one, yeah, so there's this one. So that, that shows you get in location. There is a superseded.
Which is the revised.
No, the, that's the revised one, the superseded is the one that is now obsolete. It has been superseded by the revised one. Yeah, that.
Superseded, which that'd be fit.
Uh, September, and then the revised law comes the fourteenth of October.
What's the neighbour comment?
The neighbour said, um, they don't have a problem with it provided you, they don't lose the hedge because they like to see the sparrows.
Right, okay.
That's the neighbour's comment.
And, and that's agreed, is it? That's, that, that hedge isn't part of the, um, destroying that hedge part?
I don't know on that one, I don't see, potentially, if one of those things were not before.
That wouldn't stop it.
No, it's.
Oh, wouldn't it?
It does look like, if you look on the, on this diagram here, on the right hand side, that, um, which I guess is where the, where he is talking about it, that it's, that house is coming very close to the edge, so.
Yeah, if the rules are that, you know, that complaint wouldn't, or that sort of caveat wouldn't stop it, then.
Let me just see what the word is.
Any problem with that particular exception? If he approaches his foundations, it doesn't, the neighbours.
It doesn't actually say anything on the plan when we zoom in of, um, about what's happening to this right hand by there, because that's our boundary.
We could ask for a planting scheme to be put in, subject to being granted.
Um, so what, how, how does that work, Keith?
Well, I mean, it, the neighbour has asked for it anyway, so it's something that the planning officer will be aware of, um, we could, we could ask that, you know, that comment is, is taken into consideration, and that, um, if possible, the hedge is kept as a planting scheme.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or a new one erected after the development, if it means the roots get torn out. Not particularly attractive though, is it? When you look at the front allocation, it doesn't really matter, do you?
What the.
Yeah, I agree, actually.
The size of it on there.
Doesn't look very appealing, but.
No, exactly. And also, that view that we saw the very first picture that you showed, um, Sharon, it didn't even look, from memory, that there was enough room to fit, oh, I suppose so.
Yeah, you could find the side over there, yeah.
Yeah. Crikey, is it not big enough, that house?
Yeah.
I suppose that side is good, had to open grass, and, you know. Where, um.
Yeah, on that, yeah, but I guess that is, that, that's why there's a footpath going through there, so, yeah.
Grass on the side.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we, what do, what, what shall we decide, or how do we take this forward then?
It looks like that hedge will get demolished.
It did, yeah.
Where that wall, where the new piece is coming.
It is a bit easier to look on this map, like, either hedge is quite, quite a significant hedge road there, isn't it?
Yeah.
The point in the hedge there, where he's got two windows on that side of it.
I just think.
There's, there's.
Looking at, Terry, looking at that street view then, it, I'm just wondering if that was a planting scheme that was put in, because there are hedges around most of those houses there.
And also, can we just, you know, demolish a hedge? I mean, you know, everyone goes crazy about demolishing trees, I mean, do, do hedges not have any protection?
No.
They not have.
If they're, if they're ancient hedge roads, yes, they would, but.
Yeah, and there's no birds nesting at, at the time. Have we got a block here, us?
What would you say, Amy, sorry?
We've got the block down, so we can see whether the hedge is outside his, his boundary or inside his boundary.
For whom?
But its boundary is probably the fence line, isn't it? Yeah. Which would make the hedge outside of his, his, uh, boundary and not his property. That's why I wonder if it's the planting scheme that the developer put in.
Hmm, hmm.
Chair, I just.
Who spoke just now?
Uh, that is, Tom.
Oh, hi, Tom.
Hi, uh, Chair, okay, which I, uh, sorry, I, I was in another meeting, I joined, I informed the, the Tom Clark about it, uh, which item we are talking about?
Number two, P twenty-one, six, three, nine, seven, direction, a single story side and rear extension to form additional living accommodation.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, this, so this is the location plan. But this, it doesn't, like, the hedge road forms the boundary of.
It looks like it against.
Their site, yeah.
When you open that, it's like, if you've got the hedge road is.
Which one?
But he puts that extension up, I guarantee you that hedge is, because he had to take the hedge out because of this, putting this foundation through.
What, what does, does that, you know, what position does that put us in, in terms of deciding, or can, because Keith said that, oh, it doesn't make any difference, you can't sort of stop it because of that, or what?
All we can do is ask if the planning officer is mindful to include the, uh, you know, a hedge being put back if it got damaged or removed, potentially.
And a challenge you've got?
As, as Tony said, I think on the right hand side, you look, there are windows, that windows?
Yeah.
Hmm.
So.
No.
So, so who, who trumps who then, you know, if, if someone wants a hedge and someone doesn't want a hedge, if it's not on his bound, you know, if, if, say for example, those two windows are actually looking at the hedge, um, you know, and it's not on his boundary, has he got any right to take the hedge down when someone else doesn't want the hedge to be taken down?
If, if it's not on his boundary, then it becomes, uh, you know, uh, well, who, whoever owns the other site, so I mean, is it highway, is it, uh, open spaces that, you know, are in charge of that, who maintains it?
So can, can our position be, would people agree that we could go and say, you know, we need more information about the, um, about the hedge that may, you know, sort of be impacted by this?
Yeah, that would be useful, because we need to know who owns it, who maintains it.
We have already had an extension to the, the, because this came in on the twenty-fifth of September.
Mm-hmm.
And what, what was the extension for?
No, that extended time for us to comment, because it came in after our last meeting.
Well, it's clearly, it's clearly upsetting the neighbour, so, um, on the basis of, you know, not having enough information on it, it wouldn't hurt just to put a comment that, you, you, you know, we do, we're concerned, we do need to know whether that is a open spaces maintained hedge, is it a scheme that was put in as part of the development when it was built? Because this guy, he's assuming that he can do what he wants, and that he's claimed possession of the hedge as good as, but.
Hmm, well, I, I would suggest that we, I mean, I don't know what position we're in if it's been extended, but, um, i.e. the decision time, but, you know, I don't think. Well, I, I would suggest that we, I mean, I don't know what position we're in if it's been extended, but, um, i.e. decision time, but, you know, I don't think. Personally, I don't think we can make an actual decision here, I think we need more information about the hedge.
But it would help, wouldn't it?
You could defer a decision as we require further information to clarification of ownership of the hedge and whether we retain.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah. Okay, brilliant, so, um, so who is going to propose that?
I'll move it.
Okay, I'll second it. If we can all just decide whether we support that. Oh, I think.
So, can you take a vote on that, please, councillor? One, two, three.
Sorry, is it an objection or not objection?
Yeah, so it's deferring decision to getting more information.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, yes, so. Seven in favour? Again? You again?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't.
Again? Okay, so twenty four. Four. I heard a whir of something just now, so the next one is a hundred and ten Saxon Way. Works to crown reduce one oak tree to leave a finished height of twelve metres and a radial spread of six metres. Round bit, let's see.
I'll move that here.
Thirty, thirty.
I support it. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Yeah.
I support that, yeah.
Okay. There was a minute. So that was an objection by Keith.
Yeah.
Seconded by Tom.
Yeah.
Can you take a vote on that one, please, councillor?
Yes.
He's very difficult with this. Anyone else can do?
He didn't particularly get him others.
Is that serious?
Marvelous, that's bad, right.
Did you get the numbers?
Uh, sorry, no, can you just vote again, so all those in favour of no objection, one, two, three. Four. Five, that's five in favour. Again? One again. Objection. Two, one. Thank you very much. Right, hold on a second. The next one is P twenty one eight six nine seven, P D R, one twenty eight Palmer's Lee. Conversion of existing garage to additional living accommodation. Hold on a second. That's going to be cleared. This house on the end here.
So actually, okay, we just have.
So it's this one here. And the, yeah, conversion of that garage that you set up there.
Oh.
Very, very combined plan.
So, when they do something that you can really see.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Next rule.
And I have to go back to.
Funnel.
Funnels, okay, so you can see it, yeah, so. I just zoom in a bit. Right, so this is the existing elevation, and that is what they want to do. There's a comment from payable transport.
Yeah. Move it.
Three.
And also, hardly anybody could ever get a car in their garage anyway, so.
No, that's right.
But one of the things is the purpose of that garage was to keep sometimes not only cars, sometimes the scooters, the bicycles or anything like that. Um, but that's an important component, garage. Um, and people think that it's easy to convert their garage and they do that regularly. And it's an open car parking space.
But it's, it's up to them though, isn't it, really, is it, is it, you know, they decided. To use, uh, you know, house the people instead of the, you know, bikes, then.
It suits them rather than moves, doesn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
They've still got on-street park, well, you know, extra parking, so, you know, they might only have one car.
Hmm.
If you, John, I'm setting that one.
Okay, I agree, so, yeah.
There you go.
I can't say anything. Put me under.
One. Right, one.
Any more supply?
Three, four, five, six, seven in favour? Again? One again.
This garage, you can't not.
Well, exactly, absolutely.
They're usually the glory hole.
They are, and to be honest, my clothes, in my clothes, I become, that men and other person is the only people that haven't done their garage into it.
Or they become the shared utility area for the freezer.
Yeah, quite.
Then, then one of the things, what we need to say to the builders is to construct a garage that's good enough to clip on the car. Okay, that should be the policy, then otherwise his purpose is defeated. They will be wrecked, no, they will be wrecked.
The next, the next one is P twenty.
I can't hear what Tony is saying, I'm sorry.
Um, can I just ask you, if we can move on to P twenty one eight six nine seven? Please.
That was the one we just did, that was one twenty Palmer's Lee, so the next one is P twenty one nine four six two F. Demolition, uh, demolition of existing conservatory erection of single storey rear extension to form additional living accommodation at thirty two Paragon Place. So it is. This house down here. It's this one here.
Okay.
It's the echo way of conservatory. So if I did, we, we, it's the same elevation. And that is what is there at the moment. All right, so that is what is there at the moment. And that is what they want to change.
Yeah, I, I propose, that's fine, that's great, because it's a conservatory, they're tuned into a living accommodation, that's a different one, yeah, good.
Um, does that mean you're seconding, um, Keith's proposal, Tom?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Oh, brilliant, okay, so let's speak then.
You want to say?
Oh, sorry, sorry, Tony, did you want to say something?
I think, but it's having that.
No, voting.
One, so councillors all voting favour, please, if you can show a hand. Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, thank you very much.
That's one of the nicer ones I've seen as well, mate.
Oh, absolutely, I was thinking.
I might, I might have you throwing it there, but on that.
It's about the other one, it's all first. I thought, or. It was the last, other three times that they tried.
The other one looked like a space.
Yeah. He's in picture as well.
Okay, so the next one then, it's all going on in Palmer's Lee, the next one's at seven Palmer's Lee, so.
So we can make that then, so the next one is P twenty two zero one four nine, P D R, erection of rear conservatory at seven Palmer's Lee. This one, yeah. Right, okay, so that is what's there at the moment, and that's the.
That's, that's, you know, you find, yeah, that's.
What's the, uh, comment from the neighbour, Sharon?
Is there anything? I did second serve, is it, nothing more than that?
Yeah, I don't know, Tom, before you want to.
Yeah, the, the chair stay, don't, don't jump into that, I'm asking questions about.
Not that.
Okay, okay, let, okay.
They have no objection.
Let's not fall out, let's not fall out, okay, so.
Nice.
What is the comment? Let's, let's just.
No objection.
What the comment?
It's on the screen, it basically says that. They have, it's a part of what the parking space is used for, not, nothing to do with the actual.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know, objection.
Move it, move it, yeah.
That's fine, great, that's, that's what I said. That's what I said, and I don't know, I was like a Tom.
Okay, yes, everyone's in violent agreement. Okay, tell me.
I just wanted you to think, no, it's a conserv. Yeah, that's fine, it, conserv is a different thing.
Okay, we, we, can we vote now? We've had a proposer and a seconder, so can we please all vote as to whether we agree or not?
Move it.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, thank you very much, that's the numbers. Okay.
Wheatfield?
There is a topic.
Eighty one Brooks.
Right, no, there is, there, there's one which I sent through today.
Wheatfield?
What? So. Three. So the next one is P twenty two zero seven three zero F. And it is two O three Wheatfield Drive, direction, single storey rear and front extension for additional living accommodation. Conversion of existing garage into living accommodation. So it is. This house on the end here. And it has, so, yeah, it's the same elevation. So that is what is there at the moment. That's what's there at the moment. And that's what we want to change it for.
Move it, chair.
Okay, do we have a seconder?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they are, they are converting existing garage into a living accommodation.
Can we see the plan?
The, the plan shows that they do have the two car parking spaces up on F.
Oh. There was a garage, right? There was an existing garage?
Yeah, so they're converting, that part, the conversions of existing garage.
So can I see the plan, please?
Or?
The existing one, the, one of the garages.
Yeah, so it's, it's here. And then, that's what they're doing, so they're converting the garage, they've got the two parking spaces up the front there.
Yeah.
Okay, so Keith has proposed that we, um, that we agree, is there a seconder?
Yes, Tony.
Oh, great, okay, so if we can vote then.
Right, give me one second, I'm over the top of the end. Right, so all in favour, one, two, three, four, um, and Tony's six. But six in favour? Again?
Yes.
One again. Extension. Thank you very much. Yeah, that one. Right, hold on a second. Right, so the next one is. A reconsultation, which is eighty one Cooks Place, which you saw at the last meeting. Um. Sorry, it was the one with the annex when there was no, um, no.
Oh.
Um.
Access from the.
No access, oh, yeah, from the house, that's right, um, and there was also, so you objected on the ground that. The evidence that Ben presented, this was being treated as a separate residence, insufficient parking provision and insufficient amenities, thank. Um, so, uh.
Change everything, I like.
So these are the updated.
I just added a door.
They have now added a door into the actual, actually what, yeah.
To it, to the house.
Yeah.
And then the locker then.
Yeah, exactly. I'm boarding it up.
So they had. A rich, so this was their original concern. Um, they said that, that there was no detail of proposed parking on the, and they asked for a revised plan. And then, their second comment was, when the revised plan was submitted. So now, they'll show that there is now three, a total of three parking spaces for the concurrent combined dwelling and annex. Um, and so they. They, there's no transportation objection, but they're just saying that the annex can't be sublet or subdivided from the main host dwelling. Yeah, that is what we do. Yeah.
But, you know, you just have to ask the question, how could you ever police that?
Well, they are, they are important officers, they don't make very good problems.
Hmm.
When they say it, when it's, um, obviously they talk, and it's hard to change, they might say. But there's lots of people, lots of people who are asking, like, if they can convert their garage, or your garage doors are not there, it's going to walls to extend the garage.
And nobody ever know, you get, they, they can touch it.
Does they make out of school, like, five?
Yeah. Okay, so do we have a proposer? What we're going to, what we're going to, what's the issue going to be here?
Well, Tom, you're going to propose it?
You want to poke at me? Why do you have to be so sick people standard? Tony, you're the one who had to listen, listen.
Tony, when you're at your own turn, listen, you asked me to, when I responded. Do you think? Your intolerance is a major issue, okay? One of the things, you have some issue with me, that, that comment not to be privately, not in a council meeting, we have to set some standards in the council meeting.
Gentlemen, 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 I am the chairman, I respectfully ask, I am the chair and I respectfully ask for this conversation to stop now and be taken offline, thank you. Um, I'm, if you put, I am asking now, what is the proposal in terms of a response to this planning application? Has anybody got any views about what we should be, um, what our response should be?
I don't like it, I think it's hard to object to it.
Yeah, I kind of think the same, to be honest, I, you know, I don't think, I, I, I think it's, we know where it's going, but I don't know how you could possibly police it, so.
I think they've met our initial objections, they, and if.
Sorry, Andy.
They've met our initial objections and the, uh, cause of not subletting it, if that forms part of it, I agree with you, I don't think that we can object to it, really, it doesn't have any planning issues remaining.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could put, you could, if you wanted to go in no objection, then you could obviously put in on condition that it isn't sublet or.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Sensible.
Yeah, okay, all right then, so, um, I propose, so we do that then.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a seconder?
Divided.
Yeah.
Uh, fold. Uh, set, two separate options, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll propose that.
Awesome.
Thank you. And voting, please?
Right, one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, over. Against? Extentions? Thank you very much. So the last one is another re-consultation, which is P twenty one two two three four F. The erection of single-storey rear and side extension for additional living accommodation at two four three Allman's Quo. Um, so the um, we actually objected originally to this on grounds of overdevelopment of site and insufficient information for clarified parking provision. So they have a third, your second, I'll just come out here.
I might actually think this must be quite a long term, because the numbers are large.
Yes, originally was, do you like? There's sometimes applications do hang around in the south of system, but that is quite a pretty gap, yeah. What, so what is there in that? I don't know, I can't say. So, yeah, so that is what is there at the moment. And this is what they have proposed, so they have clarified about the, um.
Parking?
Parking, yeah. And that's the two parking spaces. What is there? What is proposed?
Do they carry a gun?
Yeah, what, what's that turn behind the car?
Oh, next second, if I give you a reminder of the.
Yeah.
Right, this, this one here. On the side there.
Is it going to straighten it up?
Yeah, yeah. So this one here. Do you remember that? It was to come out here, remember that, yeah?
Obviously, it's actually.
What was the comment, sustainable?
Transport.
I think they said they wouldn't have any objections because there was three in the end.
Yeah, so that's why the, um, that's why they asked for the, this state, this was from the original thing, because we, we weren't sure where the edge, I think you remember, where the edge of the actual site went and whether one of the parking spaces was out, five years ago. They have now clarified that, that.
My question.
That one. Yeah, power grid.
Oh, yeah.
The position of the manhole. But there is, um. Yeah, so they've now clarified that the extent of their site and the fact that this car parking space is all in their land. And they've got their car parking.
What's the, uh, transport? I didn't hear that, what was that?
Michael said he hopes that both the cars wouldn't want to leave at the same time.
Didn't the transport, in the revised transport view, didn't that say about three parking spaces available and they were happy that that was enough?
No, that was a close one.
Oh, sorry, sorry, okay. Okay, well, they've done what we've asked them to do, haven't they?
No. No, nothing from the neighbour. I don't think.
That's a tax excuse, yeah.
I think this is one of those where we have to hold our nose and let it go through.
Yeah, I agree.
Seems like again, it's, it was that last one.
Yeah.
Basically.
And also, the, the, the second car is going to be parked right outside the door.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's up to them, isn't it really, I suppose?
Yeah.
Fine, but that's a tax excuse, so.
So, have we got a proposer?
Did Michael move it? Yeah, it's all right. Ask him.
Okay, lovely, all in favour? Over here, that, five, six, seven, eight, sorry, Sharon. Right, 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 ten, two, three, four, five, six, in favour? Against? One against, extension? Thank you very much. That's it for the planning applications, I think.
Lovely, thank you very much, so we'll move now on to the location, Sharon, to move on, point nine. To deal with matters referring to work within scope of planning environment committee not covered elsewhere, nine point one. South Yorkshire Council's Patchway Metrobus Extension Gypsy Patch Lane Stakeholder Liaison Group update.
You have the, um, Alan Broke, uh, proposals of what's happening in your agenda packs there. So that at my site works programme from October twenty to December twenty. And the, the bridge has now dug. And the foundations are being dug. And then I guess the new bridge will be moved into place.
New car will hatch in the lane to replace the buses.
Okay, because the station's obviously shut, isn't it, yeah, yeah.
They're doing the surface at the moment, ready for the other one to be brought across.
Hmm, good, okay. Is it not the biggest, um, something about the biggest concrete bridge or construction or something in the country or, yeah. It's just, yeah, nominal work, um, yeah.
Reproportage, isn't it?
Yeah, it's built and they're literally just going to pick it up and move it into place.
Okay.
I saw something today, I think they're using expanding foam on the sides of it.
For me, they use expanding foam for everything, sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, okay, all right, lovely, so unless anybody's got any, uh, any sort of comments, any other comments to make, let's move on to nine point two, South Yorkshire Council Arena Places Questionnaire.
So you have that in your agenda pack there, that was apparently consulting on the arena places across the area. So there is a questionnaire for everybody to fill in.
Is this one, look, all the, um, etcetera?
No, I think it's for the community as a whole.
So we have to fill it in as well, councillors and the senior. So go.
What happened in a mass now, George?
I, I don't, no, I don't, I don't know how they get there.
This hasn't come to mind at the moment.
No, no, no.
So it's just giving you.
Well, with the, and also for you to potentially pass on to anyone interested, and I think it's in, you know, the, um, update that comes out to residents, the email updates, I think it was referred to in that one, yeah, yeah.
It was, so it was mentioned, it's a committee in the forum meeting, yeah.
It would be possible to put this on our website?
Yeah, I'm, yes, I don't think it's on there, but yeah, definitely, yeah.
Chair?
Yes?
Uh, so this was placed and was mentioned in yesterday's committee in the forum meeting as well, yeah. This finished by the, so, so we, few more days.
Yeah. Okay, and that's what, yeah, as, as, um, as you were saying, Tony, you get that up on the website as well.
Right.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
So I, having looked through the questionnaire, I would suggest it's it's more of a questionnaire that individual councillors respond to, because it's actually asking you personally what you feel and what you think your priorities are. So how we try to have to respond.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, moving on then to point ten, to deal with matters relating to health and safety.
No, no.
Okay, moving on then to point eleven, to deal with the following financial matters. Eleven point one, to approve bills and direct dividends for payment.
Great, good.
Ben, start, hand up?
Yeah, that's fine, okay, I feel it's good.
Okay, so you're second, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so Ben's helping, I'm asking a question. Oh, sorry, I thought you, I forgot, I could just see his hand. I'm sorry, Ben, go on.
Just wait, hello, sir.
Hello. Um, so what was, was that a question?
Thank you, very proposed, and it was the second gig.
Okay, and, um, all in favour?
Yeah, it's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and then, that is, the next point is, um, item twelve, to confirm the date and time of the next meeting, which is the twenty fifth of November, twenty twenty at seven o'clock.
Lovely, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you everybody else for, um, attending and all your input at that trust, so, um, I think if there's no objections or no additional comments, I think we're closed. Thank you.
Bye, all.
Bye, bye, take care, everyone.
Bye.